Counsel ready? Are we all good?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody tonight. Appreciate everybody coming, so we'll go ahead and stand and say the prayer and the pledge of allegiance of the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time. Thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon our entire county. We recognize those and we are incredibly grateful for them. Please bless this council. Please bless all of our residents. And, you know, as we enter in the Christmas and New Year's timeframe here, just keep everyone safe, happy, healthy, and may we glorify you throughout. In Jesus' most precious and only name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Step. Appreciate that. Yep. Okay. Start on the agenda tonight. Is there any additions or deletions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay. Hearing none, that the Chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. All right, let's move on to the minutes. So the minutes of November 28th are before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes, counsel? Anything? Okay. Hearing none, that the Chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next on the agenda is the dispersments of December 5th and December 12th. We've had a chance to look at all the dispersments. Everybody okay with that? Okay, hearing none, that the Chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next on the agenda is the introduction of a number of resolutions. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and start us off on that, please?
Sure. A resolution concerning the proposed annexation by the town of Trap, Maryland, the town of certain real property located on the north side of the town, east of Maryland Highway number 565, and south of Backtown Road, in the third election district of Talbot County, Maryland, consisting of 5.125 acres of land, more or less, and being a portion of parcel 302, shown on tax map 54, the property, finding that the property's proposed rezoning from Talbot County's town residential, TR zoning, to the town's industrial, M zoning, upon its annexation will result in substantially different uses or substantially higher density, exceeding 50 percent, than could be granted for proposed development under the county's TR zoning, and waiving the five-year hold in accordance with section 4-416 of the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, can you go ahead and just give us an overview on what they would like to have?
Sure. So this resolution was requested by the town of Trap. The town is considering annexing certain real property. Actually, a portion of the subject parcel is already located within the town. The town wants to apply its industrial zoning to this property, which is currently zoned town residential under the county zoning. Because that zoning will result in substantially different uses or a higher density than under the county's current zoning, the council has to grant a waiver in order for the town to apply that industrial zoning within five years. So that's the purpose of the resolution. I note that Zach Smith is here tonight. He represents the property owner that initiated the annexation request with the town, and he can provide some more specific information if you'd like.
Okay. Zach, come on up.
Thank you, counsel. For the record, Zach Smith, and I do represent Brian Hall, who's the owner of the property. And just a little bit of context for the council. This parcel, as I think the resolution described, is on the north side of Trap, east of 565, south of Backtown Road. It's a 38-acre parcel. The majority of the parcel was annexed into the town years ago and zoned M industrial, but a portion of the property, approximately five-acre strip, I mean, it's just five acres, but the area along 565, was not annexed into the town. And so what Brian would like to do, what he's asked the town to do, is to annex that portion of the parcel and to zone it industrial, consistent with the balance of the property. And again, it's just one single parcel, but the town's boundary up until this point has bisected the parcel such that 33 acres is in the town and five acres is outside of the town. The town of Trap has held a public hearing and they did vote to annex the property and to apply the industrial zoning contingent on the county granting this waiver. And just to be clear, you know, Brian hopes to do, currently it's undeveloped land, and what Brian would like to do is to subdivide it into approximately 11 industrial lots to locate his business on one of those lots. He has a site contractor, and he needs a shop and a storage yard for his construction business. And then other lots would be marketed and available for other similar uses. And when I say industrial, I mean it's truly light industrial. It's more akin to what you see on Brooks Drive here in Easton or Talbot Commerce Park. It's not heavy manufacturing. Trap's zoning code doesn't permit that. I'd also just note that this is the only land within Trap that's zoned industrial. This and one adjacent parcel that runs along Backtown Road, that's the only industrial land in Trap. And that's the only land that Trap's comprehensive plan foresees as being industrial. This is the area, and I think the town believes that it will provide, you know, job opportunities, desirable services, and economic activity that will benefit both the town and the county. I think those are the reasons that they supported the annexation. So that's why we're here, just seeking a waiver so that we can, the town can apply the same zoning that's on the balance of the property to those five acres that they just annexed.
I see. I see. Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for council? Any discussion?
Mr. Callahan, could I just add?
Yes, please.
One additional point. If you look at the county's comprehensive plan, this area is already shown as being within the town of Trap. The county's plan doesn't show the division. And I think that's probably just because the maps are based on the parcel data set and this is part of a single parcel. I think that's probably why. But importantly, the county's plan, as I'm sure you know, suggests that industrial growth and development should occur in the towns, in existing town areas and growth areas. And this is indeed a growth area, this five acres shown in Trap's plan. So I think the proposal, I believe, is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan as well.
Okay, great. Great. I appreciate you bringing that up, so, okay. So at this time, this is just, you know, introducing it, so is there a raise of hands?
So introduced by Callahan, Heath, Lusher, and Step.
Uh huh. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and give, announce the number and the public hearing and the date, please?
This will be known as Resolution 352, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, at 6:30 PM.
Okay, great. Okay. Okay, so we've got to wait on the public hearing a little bit, so I think what we'll probably do here, can we do some play stuff?
County manager report, yes.
Okay, all right.
Counsel, good evening. Under board and committee appointments this evening, we have a recommendation for your consideration. This would be the Upper Shore Aging Board of Directors requesting the appointment of Mr. Kevin Moran to that board.
Okay.
I'll move for the appointment.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second to appoint Mr. Moran to the board. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And counsel, we have a couple of items. Mr. Myers, are you here? Could you, there you go. Would you like to come up? We have two items from the town of St. Michael's. They're requesting, and Mr. Roy Myers is here, he can speak to this, serving on a committee. The town of St. Michael's is requesting council support for a grant request to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Coastal Resiliency Program Outcome Two Grant. You're reading your agenda packet, the town of St. Michael's requesting a letter of support for their grant application to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for coastal resiliency grant for the San Domingo Creek West Side Waterfront area for a tidal gauge under the Nature Trail Bridge. There will be no county funds required, and Mr. Myers, want to add anything on that?
Roy Myers, I'm the Chair of the St. Michael's Climate Change Commission. I know there, I was here a couple of years ago when you gave me a letter of support for two grants we're just finishing up, so I very much appreciate that. The Climate Change Sea Level Rise Commission was put in place in St. Michael's. It's sort of like a planning, a second planning commission, and the purpose of it is to pursue grants, to do concept designs, strategies, and actually get implementation grants to address the projected stormwater flooding and sea level rise that St. Michael's is going to see by 2050. Back in 2020, we did a DNR grant for the main harbor that identified by 2050, eight areas in the main harbor would be either underwater or underwater at every high tide by 2050. So the goal of our group is to look at grants over the next five, 10, 15 years to prepare St. Michael's for the 2050 event. The way I sort of look at it is if St. Michael's is going to maintain their economy and their harbor in 2050, we have to, we have to raise the bulkheads, we have to address that so the tourists and all in St. Michael's can still get around the harbor without treading through water. We have, we've got a number of grants in place. I mentioned, two years ago, we came before you and got two DNR grants. They're ones that, thanks to your all's support, we got those grants and we're just finishing them up. We have the, we're actually having the studies presented to the town commissioners. The first one was for the West Harbor Road, East Chu area, and it's looking at raising the bulkhead, putting storm pumps to handle the rainwater behind that, and actually creating a park area down at the end of East Chu, as well as a number of rain gardens to handle the MDE requirements for stormwater runoff. So we have that, a 30% design that was presented to the commissioners of St. Michael's and accepted last Wednesday. The second grant we have is for the San Domingo Creek side of St. Michael's. I always talk about that, it's the second harbor. If you're kayakers or that type of thing, if you're over on that side, we have a kayak launch, we have the waterman's wharf and that type of thing. So we had a second grant from DNR that Bayland did for us, actually looking at the areas that would be flooded on the San Domingo side of St. Michael's. Interestingly enough, one of the areas that will be flooded most is Gray Street, where Talbot County actually has where the sewer pumping stations. So we might be in our planning actually protecting some of your resources. Out of that study, it was recommended two things for immediate action, immediate implementation. The first is the bulkhead, and Back Creek Park is failing, it needs repair. The recommendation was to convert that to a living shoreline. So our one grant request, the outcome three grant request to DNR, is to actually do the final design of the living shoreline in that area, do the permitting and actually construction of a living shoreline. So the whole area there would then be a living shoreline on San Domingo Creek in that area. So that's the first grant request and letter of support we're asking for you. The second was a very interesting strategy. If you've walked the Nature Trail back in that area, you know it goes across a bridge. The best strategy that was coming up was to actually put a tide gate under that bridge. So if sea level rise and storm surge comes up, the tide gate would keep water from flooding all the streets, including Gray Street and all that would be north of that. That is a big undertaking, and we asked for Bayland to give us a proposal to do an additional assessment, to actually do the modeling of what the rainwater and tide would all work with the tide gauge, the impact on the living shorelines, the impact. And so the second grant, which is an outcome two grant, is actually to do an additional assessment of that tide gate, because the effort to do that would be a significant, I mean, it's in like, the projection's like $2 million to do everything associated with that. So we, so we're asking for an assessment of that. So what we're looking at now is, we got the two grants that you've supported before, we've done the grants, we're now going to the next phase, and I'm really asking for your support for letters of support to proceed with both of those. We actually have the grant written. So it's going in, it'll be going in Thursday by midnight. It's already ready to go, and we're looking, hoping for your letter of support so we can proceed in that.
So counsel, you do have their requests for both grants in your packet, and so if you'd like to move on both items, you could do so.
Okay. Do we want to move on each one or both? Can we do both?
I say both.
Okay. All right.
I make a motion to approve both letters of support.
Okay. Second. Okay, we've got a motion second to go ahead and support both grant applications. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Can I, can I ask just one follow-up question on that?
Sure.
The, I presume that this tide gate underneath the covered bridge, that's essentially taking advantage of the old railroad grade as a dike, an embankment area, so protecting all the area that's behind that old railroad grade?
Right, right. There would be some work on various sections of the Nature Trail, because what we're trying to do is raise the whole area like a dam up to five feet above mean sea level. So there are some areas of the Nature Trail we'd have to raise as well. But that would be the strategy, the Nature Trail and under the covered bridge would all be like the dike with a tide gate underneath that would keep the sea, tornum surge and sea level rise from going up into that area.
For any event that's under five feet?
Right.
Which, heaven help us, when we have one bigger than that, that's great.
You're right. One of the, one of the problems we have is that if you have what's projected as a foot, one foot to 1.7 feet increase in sea level rise by 2050, and then you put a, you know, like a major storm or hurricane, the hurricanes, some of the hurricanes have been five feet above that, so you get up then to six and a half, seven feet, well, most of St. Michael's is only about eight feet above mean sea level. So if we get the sea level rise that is projected in 2050, 2070, and 2100, and then you had a major hurricane on top of it, that, St. Michael's is going to have a tough time. I mean, you're gonna, you're just gonna have to live through it and then come back and clean up afterwards.
Thank you. And thank you for all your diligent work on this project. I think it's some of the most exciting work that's going on in preparing for the impacts of climate change and, you know, what St. Michael's is doing, what Oxford is doing, both really significant efforts, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Okay. Counsel, we have one more request here from the Pickering Creek Audubon Center. They're requesting a letter of support for an application for Maryland Department of Natural Resources grant, outcome three, outcome three grant. As you read in your packet, they're requesting a letter of support for their grant application for a living shoreline project. You have that letter in your packet. There are no county funds that are required, and again, they're looking for your support in their submission.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move for the letter of support for Pickering Creek.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to go ahead and give a support letter to Pickering Creek grant. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And finally, counsel, just under announcements, I wanted to mention the county offices will be closed on Monday, December 25th, Tuesday, December 26th, and Monday, January 1st, and that concludes your county manager report for the week.
Okay, that's great. Appreciate, good job. All right. We're way ahead of schedule here.
You want to go to public comments?
Well, you can. Yes, sir. Do we have any, anybody out there? No, I'll see the sheriff, he can talk for a little bit, you know?
I haven't signed up.
Hey Frank, in the back, you want to come on up? Yeah.
Hello, my name is Frank Gonzalez, resident of Easton, also the county, or the town council president, and I'm here in my, not in that capacity, I'm here from Easton Rotary Club. We have Operation Christmas Spirit that will be on Christmas Day, and we also have some prep work that is in advance, namely on Christmas Eve, which is a Sunday. I have 2,100 pounds of chicken that I need help cutting, so if there is anyone in the public who would like to assist me and Jordan Lloyd with that work, you can call me at And if you know anyone who will need a hot meal on Christmas Day, or a jacket, or some toys for their children, they can get that at Easton Fire Department between 11:00 and 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good job. Anybody out there? Okay. Okay. Anybody else want to come on up? See how good we're doing? Okay.
We can go to council comment if you want.
Okay. You're good, good.
You haven't opened up Black Dog Alley comments yet, right?
No, sir. No. Yep, that's here in a few minutes. Yep.
I think that's what we're waiting on.
Yep, that's what we're waiting on. I'm sorry, Mr. Lusher, what did you say?
We can proceed to council comments.
Yeah. Sure. So, Mr. Step, you got anything for us, or?
Sure, I will just, I will just carry over from prayer from earlier. Just wanted to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Stay safe, stay happy, stay healthy, enjoy times with friends and family, and we're looking forward to serving you in '24.
Mr. Lusher?
Last week, several of us were down at the Maryland Association of Counties Conference in Cambridge, their winter conference, which I'll characterize as of those I have attended, perhaps the most productive yet. We had an impromptu meeting after the Midshore Resource Council lunch with council members from Caroline Kent and Queen Anne's to discuss the future of the midshore to landfill at Ridgely, and whether its life could be extended another seven to 10 years, something that we discussed just two weeks ago when Maryland Environmental Service was before us. So some good coordination among the counties, communication among the counties there. I garnered details about the state's proposed $3 billion transportation funding cut, which includes holding shared highway user revenues to present levels rather than the graduated restoration of funds over the next three years that had been negotiated with the previous administration in the legislature. That, of course, is going to pinch Talbot County and every other local jurisdiction, both counties and municipalities. That's, that's something that we will be, that we will be paying attention to and will have to adjust our plans come budget time. And finally, we were updated on the blueprint for education funding requirements between now and fiscal '34, which is significant, a 32% increase for Talbot County. It's different for every local jurisdiction, above the prior mandate, though an even greater pinch will be felt in some jurisdictions like Baltimore City and Prince George's County. Still, significant impacts on Talbot County, and knowing these in advance, what the landscape looks like will better help us to prepare.
Okay, great. Good job.
I would just like to commend our county for its generosity and everything that it does in this holiday season, whether it's from Hog Neck, who had a Christmas party and had collected presents to donate to those in need, to what President Gonzalez mentioned that the Easton Rotary Club does. We should be very proud of what all our organizations do, and this is a wonderful county to live in, and I'm so grateful, and I hope that the citizens are grateful as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
This is our last meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
For the month. We won't be back until 2024?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. So I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I know this may, you know, during the holidays, sometimes families have hardships, but we have great resources here in Talbot County, so everyone that's here this evening, I just want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you in 2024.
And I'll jump on that with my colleagues, too. Like you say, it's been a great year. It's been our first year together, and we've all survived it so far, you know? So we're good, and we've all done a good job, and I appreciate this year with you, Mr. Stamp, guiding us, and your staff has been top-notch, that's for sure. And you've guided us, you've helped us, the staff has been phenomenal. Susan, Jess, Patrick, yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you. You've been, you've been great, but we've had some tough subjects, and we've still got a few things to get settled, and you've really done a good job, you know? And I know sometimes that, you know, getting to the finish line's tough, and you've done a great job getting us there, so I really appreciate the effort and the hard work that, at nights that you do get us there, that's for sure. And since I got Mike here, I appreciate Mike and Ray, all that you do through the years. You got, you got a tough job, that's for sure, and I appreciate everything, and I'll, I'll put a salute to the sheriff out there. You work hard for us, you keep us safe, and I can't thank you enough for protecting us up here every couple of weeks, and that's a big deal, too. And not only that, you just protecting and being there for the public. We couldn't ask for a better sheriff's department. You guys are top-notch, you're the best, and I appreciate everything you're doing for us, that's for sure. So. Okay, we're close, so, all right. Get ready, we've got a few more minutes here, and we'll go ahead and start on the public hearing. Okay.
Three minutes.
So we've got, we've got a couple of things tonight on the public hearing. We've got Resolution 351, which is, deals with, it's going to deal with Black Dog Alley and the traffic, and then we have Bill 1550, which is going to help Trap with their liquor license and get them where they need to be, too. So, we'll go ahead and get organized and get started.
Two minutes.
But we want to wait just a second.
Do you want to call, do you want to call at 6:30?
It's 6:30 somewhere.
Okay, yeah, I got you. Okay. All right, so, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and get us started then, if you would, please? Resolution 351.
Resolution number 351, a resolution to establish a vehicle weight limit on Black Dog Alley pursuant to Maryland Code Annotated Transportation Section 25-102A11 and Chapter 134 of the Talbot County Code Road statutes in order to reroute heavy truck through traffic.
Okay. All right. Mr. Thomas, you want to give us a little bit of overview on sort of like what we were talking about, so people understand that, you know, the sheriff's not going to drive him crazy writing tickets out and all that stuff? So help them understand what we're trying to achieve here, please?
Sure. So this resolution would establish a weight limit of
Sure, so this resolution would establish a weight limit of 17,000 gross combination weight rating and gross vehicle weight rating on Black Dog Alley. This is primarily intended to prevent heavy truck through traffic. There are several exceptions, such as for government vehicles, agricultural vehicles, emergency vehicles, vehicles owned by property owners that live along Black Dog Alley, or whose properties are only accessible by Black Dog Alley, and any vehicles providing services to those residents. So, it's not a complete prohibition on the vehicles of that weight and higher, it's just, and I think as we've discussed, you know, part of the problem stems from the fact that a lot of these vehicles that are traveling through Easton use apps like Waze, or Apple Maps, or Google Maps-
Right.
-that are routing them down Black Dog Alley, and that heavy truck traffic is causing damage to the roadway, and that's really what-
Yeah.
...I think the main thing this bill is designed to prevent because the road isn't equipped to handle that kind of traffic.
Right, right, exactly, so, okay, well, I appreciate that. Do you, do you, it's, do you want to mention anything, or?
Well, just clarifying questions, so one of those, one of those exceptions, Mr. Thomas, is for agricultural vehicles, so if somebody's harvesting soybeans off of a field anywhere in that part of the county, they'll not heading back out to the highways ultimately, but they'll need to use Black Dog Alley to get to where they're going. Such vehicles, though they would clearly be over the weight limit, are also clearly exempted from this provision.
Yes, the resolutions precisely says the following vehicles are exempt from the weight limits set forth, vehicle, one of them is vehicles engaged in agricultural production or operations.
Okay, so I'll go ahead at this point and open the public hearing, so I'll give individuals three minutes to come on up and talk about the bill, and if you're representing somebody, I'll give you five minutes, so at this stage, is anybody over here to my left that want to come up and talk about the bill? Yeah, come on up, yes, sir. Resolution, I'm sorry.
Sheriff, feel free to, when he speaks, but-
Sure, sure, excuse me one second, what, I'm sorry, what did you say? Yep, yep.
So, I'm Keith Shortle, I live off Black Dog Alley, I farm off Black Dog Alley, my equipment is on Black Dog Alley, so I kind of see what goes by all the time.
Yeah.
The agricultural exemption that you described covers me fine, I hope I don't get stopped every time I'm going back and forth to the farm by my friendly sheriff's deputy asking me where I'm going, because there really is no, that's the can of worms, how do you enforce this? You know, it's not really easy to pick out which trucks are hauling from the field, which ones are just taking the shortcut.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
During, during harvest season, obviously, there's four, I think there's four of us that farm ground on Black Dog Alley, and we use it regularly.
Right.
The rest of the year, one thing that does happen on Black Dog Alley that is probably detrimental to the road is all of the grain that is hauled through Black Dog Alley, that comes from the Port of Baltimore, heading to Hurlock, or vice versa, back and forth. If you notice, I mean, you know, the 10 months of the year that we're not harvesting something, there's a lot of agricultural products being moved in trucks down the road, so I don't know how that, you know, affects this. I would just meant, I think you already mentioned the GPS things that just guide you down the road anyway.
Right.
Also, signage placement, I mean, if you do something, you're going to have to put some kind of obvious signage, really before you get on Black Dog Alley, I mean, it needs to be on Dover Road, it needs to be on Route 50, because once I turn on Black Dog Alley with a tractor trailer, I'm not backing up.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. That's a good point.
And I guess, and again, the last thing I wanted to mention was, you know, the road in front of Eric Harvey's place is the hotspot for accidents.
Right.
The road is too narrow, there's no shoulder, the white line that the county paints down the edge doesn't really keep you out of the ditch, and irregardless of what you do with this, the work that needs to be done on Black Dog Alley still needs to happen. I know it's been surveyed, it's been talked about for years, but I'm not sure where it's at in the process, and I know that you mentioned with the governor scaling back on transportation funds, that may push it back further yet, I don't know.
Okay, well, thanks, I appreciate your good comment, yep, thank you. Anybody else? Mike, Mike, you and Ray, could you come up here for a second and just kind of, if you don't mind, comment for the public on sort of our intent, the signs, and sort of what we're going to do to prepare, or prepare people, you know, and drivers?
Very quickly, just also advise the council and the general public as well, that the county actually has initiated design of Black Dog Alley. Los Montgomery Associates has been doing the design, we're roughly about 40% complete.
Okay.
We're look, what we have done is looked at designing Black Dog Alley from Dover Road to Mathiestown Road, 328, and I think it's 331, so that's been done. What we now are trying to do is get a property mosaic, to identify where we need a right-of-way, and then once we have that information, I think we are going to come before the county council during the budget session and look at doing a phases for the Black Dog Alley, pretty much doing the southern section first, so we'll be presenting that to you during the budget process. In addition to that, we'll then have to go through the final design for permitting for that phase, and then at the same time, we are going to look to at potential federal funding for this. We have been advised that, you know, we've got to work with the state, state highway administration, but we are going to try and seek federal funding for this project.
Okay, that's great, that's great.
And then the other thing, we did have, just so the council's aware, we did have a work session with the sheriff's office, EMS, the roads department, and Department of Works on October 24th, and ultimately, you know, we're, you know, as far as the signage is concerned, we'll do everything we can to get the signage up, working with Brian Moore, and I think Mike, you know.
Right, so, yeah, ordinarily, there's like advanced signage-
Yeah, right.
-and so we, we work with, or Brian's office will work with state highway administration, because there'll have to be advanced signs on state roads, but as a rule, it's usually not an issue.
Okay.
We all follow the same standards for signage, so it should not be a problem.
So, if this goes through, is this, is this 60 days or 90 days?
Because it's a resolution, take effect immediately upon adoption.
Okay, okay, all right. So, okay. Any other questions, counsel?
And you, we do have, we do have an existing restriction just like this on another road nearby?
Right, so we have an identical restriction basically on Dover Neck Road by the landfill, and then we have a, on Chilcut Road, which is, runs into Dover Neck Road, it's actually a 10,000 pound gross, gross vehicle weight restriction. Those have been in place for seven years, I believe, and I think after there was, you know, from input I've had from sheriff's office, they, you know, there's an initial educational period, if you will, and really, it hasn't been that owners and effort since.
Okay, great, great. Anything else from counsel?
Just one question in regards to where the signs will be placed to alert the drivers that may be coming down that road.
So, there'll be, because we've got essentially three main intersections along the corridor, so there'll be advanced signing, we'll have to check with state, how it's, very likely it could be on Route 50 up by the airport before people come onto the road, at Airport Road. We'll have to have advanced signage on Mathiestown Road and Dover Road, because those are also major routes where trucks could come on there, and I think that's where most of the advanced signage will be, I might be missing one, but that's basically the road-
Chapel.
Chapel, I'm sorry, I knew there was another thing. But there's, you know, basically, it's to give trucks the opportunity to not commit and take a stop.
Right.
That's the goal, like that signage.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, all right, appreciate it, guys, thank you. Okay, okay, anybody else would like to come up and comment on this? Yeah, come on up, sheriff.
So, I know I sent this to counsel earlier, Black Dog is our, is our most accident-prone road in the county-
Right.
-outside of the town jurisdictions. Thanks, Mike. And Mr. Shortle, obviously, he lives there, and he knows better than I, because I just see the data, and he sees it every day, but that, that section between 331, as we all know, and the Mike they talked about, is, is our most accident-prone outside of intersections. The other one are all the intersections that we've had issue, accident, accidents at the various intersections with Mathiestown Chapel, 309, and of course, 331, but the ones that are just running right off the road are in that stretch from 331 Dover Road, up to about the development, where the housing developments start, right in front of the Harvey Place, and that's where you'll see us quite often, so you really want to slow down there because we're there. And Mr. Shortle was right in that I stopped a car for doing 70 past me at a W O line on there, and I stopped him, I asked him where he was going, he was going to the beach from Baltimore, because it's sending him around Easton.
Wow.
I said, "You're going to the beach on this road?", and he said, "Oh, yeah, that's the way the computer sent me." My other concern is, and I know that it's a priority for counsel, is that once that hospital gets built, I'm sorry, once the hospital gets built, you're going to have all the South Carolina traffic coming that way, all their ambulances coming out of South Carolina, all the workers, all the visitors are going to take Black Dog to there, so when we do the improvements, we really have to take into account that you're going to have more emergency vehicles on that road now than, than, than you ever will have, so we really probably need to, and I know the council's going to move forward with it, but that's just my comment, we really need to attack this thing before, you know, that, that starts.
Yeah, before, yep, okay.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, good job, thank you.
And you can see by that handout that I gave you that where the accidents occur the most.
Right, yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Okay, anybody else would like to come up and comment on it? Okay.
One more.
Yes, sir, come on up.
I'm John Tracks, and I live on Black Dog Alley, and my family has lived on Black Dog Alley for over 100 years, my ancestors. Anyway, I'm also known as the self-proclaimed mayor of Black Dog Alley, because at one time, the original Black Dog Alley ended at our farm. Not too many people know that, but it, it began on Denton Road, or at that point, where the McCarty's live, and it actually dead-ended at the Tracks Farm. Anyway, a little bit of history, it doesn't hurt anyone. I fully support this resolution. I would like to add to it that I would like to see the, the proposed or the studied expansion of that section of Black Dog Alley, to hurry up and have it in place as soon as possible, because that's going to help with the traffic. I don't think it'll slow down the traffic, perhaps we could add some speed bumps. I go out to get the mail each day, and I certainly am careful about looking both ways twice to make sure no one's coming on either side before I go to the mailbox, even though the mailbox is set back from the road a good distance, but I'm very concerned about that and the prospect of, of course, the widening of that road and making it safer-
Right.
-would encourage more traffic and higher speed, because that's a straight stretch from Dover Road to Mathiestown Road. So, I would like to see it, this bill passed, and I would like to urge a speed up of the expansion, and consideration of my thoughts about how to deal with the speed on that road. So, I thank you for the time and appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
First of all, follow-up.
Yeah, we got, come on up, follow-up, come on up.
It wasn't addressed by the sheriff, but how would, was there, what is the plan to enforce this?
Tickets.
Like, what kind of a ticket?
So, we would obviously start with an educational period in the beginning, you know, but-
Yeah, hey, hey, sheriff, could you come up and just address that, please? That'd be great, I appreciate that.
Sure, so, thanks for the question, so we would, there would be an educational period in the beginning, to try to educate people on this, you know, the state police also have that truck enforcement unit, and we would notify them of that as well, of what's going on, there'd be an educational thing. What you bring up about the tractor trailers coming out of Baltimore is unique, and I didn't, I was unaware of that, that they're using that as a cut-through, so I think, I mean, depending how it exactly is written, it could be difficult to enforce that, where the truck coming out of the Port of Baltimore, because-
You can't tell there's a need.
Right, right, I mean, we would know in June-
Right.
-somebody's spilling corn out of the back of their truck, it's like, this is not one of our guys. So, I think that would be a challenge. Do you know how much, like, traffic you see from there, from the port?
You probably don't really know. There was one company which is not hauling, you know, I found that out, they were running four trucks a day, two loads, two loads a day, four trucks a day, so eight round trips through there. There's another one I know that runs at least two trips a day through there, and there's probably some others also, so at least-
They're going down to the chicken places and the software?
They're heading through organic order from Port of Baltimore to the feed mill in Hurlock, is what it is. And, but, but, I mean, it's in all fairness, I mean, there's lots of grain that comes from large mills and goes somewhere, I mean, the, all the, all the grain mills around the shore are moving grain from one place to the other, a lot of it does come through the long line.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a challenge to enforce, and what I've seen in the resolution, but I haven't seen, I haven't read every word of what, what it'll say.
I mean, it's obvious when the UPS tractor trailer comes through, he's not delivering it by long line.
Right.
Yet those things are obvious.
Right, and I think it's going to probably be more obvious stuff that we would be able to enforce.
And there's a lot, there's a ton of, pardon, there's a ton of dump truck traffic.
Yes, there is.
A lot of dump truck traffic on that road.
There is a lot of dump truck, we had an accident with a dump truck wanting to the ditch right there, in the heart of the place as well. And I think we're out there a lot, that's probably our most worked road for the sheriff's office, and I didn't bring those, those numbers of how many times we're out there, but we're out there a lot.
I thought you were assumptions.
Yeah, that's right. So, I think it's going to be an educational thing, and I think, you know, the deputies might be stopping some of those trucks, some of those grain trucks in the off-season, saying, "Hey, you know", and I think we'd have to sit down and talk-
As a staff and talk to the law office about, okay, does this fit the, you know, it's just, it's through traffic.
Right, yeah, it's through traffic.
So, I think the spirit of the law is in the right place. We might not be able to cite every single one of those, I probably don't want to be on record as saying all that, but we certainly can discourage it.
I mean, I think if you enforce it a little bit-
Yeah. We had the same issue, counsel, on Dover Neck, when we first did that, there was an educational period, we went out there and worked it, MSP went out there and worked it, educated the truck drivers, and now we're not seeing the complaints from the neighbors, but they had these trucks coming down here, so I think it-
Well, this is step one, this is step one on something that we're all going to work together on, we know there's a problem, we know we're not going to lock anybody up, so it's just a matter of-
Well, I might lock some people up.
Okay, not me, please, not me.
But not for driving the road.
Not me, okay. All right, sheriff, I appreciate it, let's go. All right, one more thing, Mr. Tracks, you're going to have to, you're going to have-
The resolution-
Wait a minute now, you're going to have to come up, because people can't hear you. Okay.
Also, there's a lot of trash trucks that go through- Also, there's a lot of trash trucks that go through Black Dog Alley at that section, because they're going to the, well, going to the landfill for the transfer, a lot of them. And I'm wondering whether or not, uh, trash trucks are included or excluded by exception.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, all right. So, um, at, at this time, um, I think, uh, it's eligible, uh, to, to vote? Madam Secretary?
Mike.
Okay, go, go, yep.
Mike, just make a quick comment about the, uh, the grain trucks that aren't local.
Yes.
Is that the road's gonna be posted with a weight limit, and folks that aren't from here aren't gonna know about these exceptions.
Mm-hmm.
They have CDL licenses, which obviously they wanna protect their livelihoods. So I suspect that a lot of these folks, I mean, they may figure it out, but for the most part, they're not gonna use the road if they're overweight.
Right.
Um, and trash trucks, uh, I, no trash truck's gonna fit under that weight limit. So I think that'll, they'll be excluded by that also.
Okay.
Unless they're doing pickups from those neighborhoods.
Exactly, they're providing the service, exactly.
Right, right. That's what I was thinking too.
Sorry, I just wanted to mention that.
Yep, yep. No, I appreciate that, Mike. Thank you. Okay. Yes, sure. Come on up.
I apologize. This is, um, the public comment section. Is that correct?
Sure. Yep, no, no, no. It, no, this is on, um, a resolution.
Black Dog Alley.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Okay, anybody else? Um, okay. Madam Secretary, okay, um, well, uh, first of all, I wanna close, close the, uh, public hearing. Okay? And, um, we'll, we'll.
If this is eligible for vote, you can simply call for the roll.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, Madam Secretary, could you, um, uh, first of all, um, all right, call for the roll then. Thank you.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the bill on 1550? That'd be great.
Bill number 1550, a bill to amend Chapter 11 of the Talbot County Code, alcoholic beverages regarding the issuance of Class E beer, wine, and liquor licenses for urban locations.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, would you go ahead and just give us an overview on that, please, for the public to under, help un, understand that?
Yes, this bill creates an exception to the, the market test that's provided for in Section 11-8 of the County Code, uh, for off-sale licenses. Um, so this would allow a Class E alcohol dispensary in a, in a municipality that does not already have one. Um, the only municipality that would be affected by this at the moment is Trap, because they're the only municipality in the county that doesn't already have a Class E alcohol dispensary. As this market study ties the, uh, availability of these off-sale licenses to the population, and I think in Trap, they have, there, there's might be two current Class E licenses that are, I think are gas stations. So this would allow the town to have a liquor store, uh, that would sell, you know, beer, craft beer, uh, fine wines, that sort of thing, that the residents would otherwise have to travel to, to Cambridge or Easton to get.
I got you. Okay. All right, that's great. Okay. Um, okay, so I'll go ahead and open this up, um, the public hearing for, uh, 1550. So would anybody like to come on up on this side, on my left here? Come up, talk about bill? Yes, sir, come on up. It's all right.
Yeah, I'm Mike Sullivan, Commissioner, Town of Trap.
Yes, sir.
I've been sent here to basically, uh, express our pleasure with this resolution. We're more than welcome it. Our, uh, town is certainly in need of any commercial development, and we're hoping to, uh, see this as just the beginning of that, uh, as we get more of a population that can sustain, uh, these, uh, businesses. Um, we're hoping that they will last. I've been there 20 years, and I've seen a few come and go. And it's basically, they just don't have enough, uh, citizenry in the town to support it. But I also, in the 20 years I've been there, I'm getting tired of constantly having to drive to Easton or Cambridge in order to buy basic things. Obviously, liquor is not one of the main things that I'm looking for. I don't even drink. But, um, you know, it's, it's a start, and I think, um, hopefully this will be the, the, uh, beginning of many more businesses coming in. We're starting to get a lot of interest in, uh, in the town, and, um, really pleased to see that happen.
Good. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay?
Any questions?
Just, thank, thank you for, for expressing an opinion on behalf of the town, uh, when we're, when we're, uh, addressing a bill that primarily impacts the municipality. It's, and this is a quality of life issue. It's good to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks a lot. Okay, a, anybody else like to, to comment? Okay. Anybody here on, on, on my right here, wanna comment? Okay. All right, so I'll go ahead and, and close the, um, public hearing on that. And Madam Secretary, is this, um, eligible?
If you bring it to third reader.
Okay.
So the, the ordinary order would, would.
The go-to.
Would, would, would send this to third reader at our next meeting?
Okay, that sounds good. So let's put that on the agenda for, for the next meeting. That would be great. Okay? All right. That's, that's it on that. Okay? Yep, so, um, um, I think we've wrapped everything up, but we have one lady out here. Um, we, we did counsel comment a little while ago, cause we were ahead of schedule. So you're, you're welcome to come up here. Okay?
So reopening public comment?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for that opportunity.
Yeah, no problem.
President, Council President. For the record, um, my name is Lisa Marie Gezzi, and I reside at 7218 Max Moore Creek Drive in Easton. And I'd like to, um, res, uh, express my concern for the removal of Bill Anderson from the Public Works Advisory Board. I first got to know Bill 10 years ago in 2013, when he and I were just becoming beekeepers, actually. We'd had a few years under our belt, and I got to know him from a personal side. I'd never known him otherwise. Little did I know at that time that Bill's background, uh, was in envi, in environmental law. And I first found out, not only was he an envi, environmental lawyer in Washington, but an excellent and well-respected lawyer. In fact, I learned this from a, the husband of a long-term friend of mine, an ophthalmologist in Washington, D.C. And he had worked with Bill on many matters in Washington. He was actually considered a super lawyer, when, before retirement, of course. You might be asking yourself, what is that? Sounds like Superman? You might be right in thinking that. Super Lawyers is a rating service of outstanding lawyers from more than 70 practice areas who have attained a high degree of peer recognition and professional development. The patented section of the process of super lawyers, that is, includes independent research, peer nominations, and peer evaluations. So, an environmental lawyer in Talbot County, what a win for the county. Someone who has the expertise to understand the ins and outs of our county sewerage. Believe me, Mr. Anderson never thought of this as a glorious position. In fact, I've heard many comments from people in this industry, nobody ever wants to do this kind of work. Well, Bill felt very dedicated to it and very much, um, dedicated himself to it. A little bit of Bill's background, he's been working with the Clean Water Act since 1973, and has witnessed participated in its development, judicial interpretation and interpretations and implementations ever since. He served on the council of the American Bar Association. Also, a section of that, the section on the environment, energy, and resources, and co-chaired the Committee on International Environmental Law. He graduated from UNC, the John F. Kennedy School of Government, and Harvard Law School. Talbot County, what a win. He's listed among the best lawyers in America. He and his wife Jane have served the county, and, and, I'm sorry, he and his wife Jane have lived here over 33 years. And we all know what spouses do in support, and we know how much Bill has given to the county. And I wanna say thank you to his wife, Jane, as well. But what I wanna share with you is.
And I'm gonna need you to wrap it up, if you can.
Yeah, I have about 30, thank you, 30 seconds.
Okay.
He's demonstrated loyalty, dedication. He's not a self-serving individual. He cares about his county's actions, and he is a very dedicated servant and knowledgeable in this area. If I had anybody to pick for my team, I would pick Bill Anderson to be on my team, because he would help, um, guide to the better outcome. Talbot County Council made an excellent decision in nominating him to be on the Public Works Advisory Board in 2014, 2018, and again in 2022. What really concerns me now is that the county council chose to remove Mr. Anderson from his seat in the last couple of weeks. Why is that? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Mr. Lesh, you wanna go ahead and, uh?
Wrap us up?
Yep.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 9th, beginning at 6:00 P.M. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 P.M. and then adjourning to a closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
So moved. Okay. We got a motion, yep. We got a motion second to go ahead and, um, and adjourn. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.